I'd like to call this evening's regular meeting of the Stoughton area School District Board of Education to order. Ms. Egan, could you please take the role?
Yes. Mr. Buban?
Here.
Mr. Coughlin?
Here.
Mr. Fry?
Here.
Ms. Fitzgibbon?
Here.
Mr. Jackson?
Here.
Ms. Sorge's Excuse? Mr. Sullivan?
Here.
Ms. Harpian?
Here.
Ms. Genter?
Here.
President Dirks? Here. At this point in the meeting, we would entertain any public comment from members of the public who are here. And I talked to a few young men who indicated that they probably would. So if you are interested in addressing the board, please come up to the podium over here, state and spell your name for the record, and if you can, please try to keep your comments to three minutes. Oh, and your address, sorry. Yes, sir.
Hello, my name is Will Irving. My address is 611 South Kennedy Street. I am from the Boy Scouts of America, PAC 161, and I am here to work on one of our Boy Scout projects and learn how I can help the community.
Thank you.
I'm Andrew Scott. My address is 644 Canyon Road N. I'm also here with 161 Boy Scouting America, and I am here to learn how the school board works.
My name is Indiana Dennis, and I live on 2423 Anderson Avenue, and I'm here for the same reason they're here.
Thank you, and we're happy you're here. Is there anybody else that would like to address the board this evening? All right, I don't see anyone moving forward, so next up is our Spotlight on Learning.
So I'll have Jeff Emright, Principal of Sand Hill Elementary, introduce the video.
Good afternoon, and boy, it's gonna be hard following those guys. Best shot here, nice job. Just me, Timothy Scott Jr. is a mindful hip-hop artist that comes from the California Bay Area. Since 2012, he's been bringing students and their families positively, mindfulness practice, well-being through his coined term mindful hip-hop. And in 2015, he collaborated with the Richard Davidson Center for Healthy Minds at the University of Wisconsin in Madison to help with students and with the belief of bringing mindfulness practices into the elementary. He's shared his talents throughout the entire world as far as what he does. And thanks to the Working for Kids group, we were able to bring just me into Stoughton. He did some work with us, and I've got a short little video I'd like to share with you. He also did some work with our staff, so it wasn't just with our students. And so we had two different assemblies, K-1, 2, and 3, 4, 5. You're gonna get a hodgepodge, about three-minute video of both. I didn't put the staff up there, but you can imagine the staff kind of getting into it just like the students did, so just to spare them, I did not put them in. But please enjoy. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
I have one question.
Sure.
Before you start, because I saw the clip earlier.
Yes.
What is he saying? What is the, what's the chant that he's yelling out?
There's several different chants.
Oh, okay.
Depends on which one it is. So sometimes he says, he'll say, the students are supposed to chant back "Just me."
Okay.
So they'll say something, and they'll, and that's, and then he'll do "Focus, focus."
That I heard, yes.
Yep, and then he does another one that talks a little bit about respecting the teachers and how we're using our minds to really provide a better learning environment. So how to, how to really relax our minds when we're feeling a little uptight and anxious. So he's got some good work, I'm gonna tell you. When you can get in front of 500 students and have it, like you could hear a pin drop. It was just absolutely amazing. I'm sure you guys will see some things that are pretty cool on this. This is just kind of a, just a short snapshot of some of his work.
Thanks.
All right, so he did a great job. school. So he spent about an hour with each group and then about an hour with the staff after school, and some of the strategies are working for us, so just thought I'd share that with you.
Thank you. All right, thank you. Okay, next up is our legislative update.
Thanks, Scott. We have, this is like one of the bigger ones that I sent out, just because there's a lot going on, but I wanted to bring your attention to some alerts. One was about the Common School Fund. And actually, this was brought to us by our media specialist department. There is a draft legislation out there that could affect money that we get for our library media and technology program, so if any of you have some time, contact your state representative and senator and ask them not to sign on to the proposal. There's also another action alert about the tax reform bill, but I mean, I wrote this as of Friday, so it sounds like they've come up with something. But one thing that I just thought was important for us to talk about, something small that would really have a big effect on our staff, and that is the proposed elimination of the deduction for classroom supplies that teachers buy on their, with their own money. And the Senate version actually doubled the $250 deduction, but the Assembly version eliminates it altogether. And I don't know where it's ended up now, we'll find out more, but I think it might be something that we may want to talk about as a board if there's something that we can do, if this actually goes through, because we know teachers spend their own money on a lot of things. We do have the grants and other things, but it's just, I thought it was important to bring that forward. I'll just give you a word of caution, though. I emailed all these folks, and several of the representatives, if you don't live in their state, they won't even let you send an email anymore. They make you enter your zip code, and they test it on their database, and then they say, "You don't live in my area, so I'm not gonna take your email." Others, you get the email through, and then they respond back and say, "Well, you're not my constituent." So it is a little maddening. Anyway, there are, there's a public hearing tomorrow on many, many bills that the Senate Education Committee is having, and so I tried laying those out for you. Nothing, I think, there's nothing super pressing, but it's just good to be informed. And we also had the first meeting of the Blue Ribbon Commission on school funding. I think I talked to you about this a little bit after the Legislative Advocacy Conference, that they were putting this together, and Luther Olson is part of that. And he's also, he's one of the co-chairs of the Education Committee, so I'll try to keep my eyes and ears open for more information regarding that. And then, just a little FYI, the, for the delegate Assembly resolutions have been posted onsite. John got something in the mail, and hopefully we get that on the agenda before the convention, so he can just bring us up to date on what some of those are and how they may affect our school.
Right, I think we'll pencil that in for our meeting on the fourth.
Okay, thanks.
Or eighth, not the fourth, sorry. Next up, the District Administrator's Report.
Thanks, Scott. As I'm sure most of you are aware, we had a little glitch in our network and our internet last week. About two weeks ago, so not last week, but the end of the week before, the tech department noticed that we had a virus that was spreading through the district. And initially, our protections and things we had in place were able to isolate this virus and get rid of it. But this was a virus that replicates itself, and it kept getting more and more evasive and started to overwhelm our systems. And so last week, Tuesday or Wednesday, the third building was affected. So we had seen it in two buildings, and we're working on that. The third building became affected, affected. And what this virus was doing was locking up our computers, causing them to reboot, et cetera. Everything was freezing. So Paul, in consulting with folks, took what, what I believe is probably the most prudent approach, is probably one of the most conservative, but I think it was prudent. So Thursday, at about 11:30, we shut down the network. And the network was shut down all of Thursday afternoon and all of Friday, as they originally started to isolate this virus and to start cleaning it out. Paul and his staff, I gotta give a lot of kudos to Paul and his staff. They, they worked Thursday, they worked Friday, they worked all weekend on recreating a new clean network. Some of you may saw it when you tried to log in today, there was SASD clean, which was virus-free. They reimaged every machine, every teacher machine, and up and running for this morning. Chromebooks were not affected by this virus, and so we didn't have to worry about them. Our network isn't totally, fully up yet, it's coming up in pieces. So for example, files that are saved on our network are not accessible yet. But this morning, they brought up our transportation software back online, they brought up our library software, and they're slowly bringing everything up online. Again, they created a whole new network, and I give them, Paul and Roger and Dan and Kate, a lot of kudos for everything they did, because they just, they, they were fabulous. And we're happy to say that we're back up and running, and we're getting back to emails. I had almost 200 emails from the time I was gone that I've been spending today trying to catch up on. Just getting my voicemail, because our voicemail goes to emails, so I just started to see those at 4 o'clock. So we're trying to catch up to everything, and on the plus side, I heard from a lot of staff who actually, by Friday, were enjoying us being disconnected, because it, it was a little slower pace. I don't know how the students felt, but it was a little slower pace, and some of them suggested that we do this on a somewhat regular basis, where we announce that we're gonna flip everything off, and we go back to paper and pencil and no technology. But again, I'm happy to say that, that we're slowly getting back up and running. Today's meeting, while it's being recorded, we cannot broadcast simultaneously, and we can't stream simultaneously, because that part's not up, so we will, we're recording it, we will upload it to, for folks to, to watch at a later date. But we're slowly coming back online, and they've isolated it. As near as they can tell, it's something, somebody must have opened an attachment to some email that contained the virus, and it, it's spread. So we will be doing some further education and further work with staff and students about, "Don't open attachments from emails you don't recognize," and things like that. So that's the status of our technology, and I'm very appreciative to our staff and our, our families for being understanding. We were doing a lot on phones Thursday and Friday, because that was pretty much the only way that we could still have access to some of our emails, going through our phone. So thank you again to the tech department. Then the last thing I have is, we've talked about Alice training throughout, and we will be doing a 4K Alice training February 9th from 8 to noon. So staff in the 4K will be getting some Alice training on February 9th, and then this is the last week before our winter break. And so all of next week, buildings will be closed, and staff and students will be off.
So questions or comments from anybody about that? Okay, then next up is the consent agenda. Go ahead.
I move approval of December 4, 2017, regular board meeting minutes. I move approval of the December 1, January 9, 2018 check register, and the December 18, 2017 e-card transaction report as presented. We would like to say thank you to the following individuals and groups, and move approval of their donation to the district. $5,000 from Chris Beebe for the Fab Lab. $3,200 from Stoughton Football Incorporated for Huddle Athletic Software Football Potion. $1,631.99 from Stoughton Football Incorporated for Football Camp, Transportation, and Football Playoff Coach Bus. $750 from the Madison Scout Reunion Project for Martin Band Supplies and Instruments Maintenance. $645 from Fox Prairie Working for Kids for the Fifth Grade Musical Play License. $579.20 from the AESC Staff Bob Fund for the purchase of a refrigerator for the AESC building. A related cash donation budget adjustment for $11,806.9. Move approval of a Beef Council Grant in the amount of $100 awarded to the high school family and Consumer Science Department, and DPI Team Nutrition Grant in the amount of $387 awarded to Keganza. I move approval of a temporary professional educator contract for Kristi Swig, fourth graded teacher at Keganza Elementary, from December 6, 2017, to June 8, 2018.
The consent agenda has been moved for approval. Is there a second?
Second.
From Tim, any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The consent agenda is approved. We have two discussion items on the agenda for this evening. The first is a presentation from Michelle Madden regarding Tahoe's food service.
Hi there. See if I can get this right, let's see. So I'm Michelle Madden, I'm the Food Service Director. This is my ninth school year, so I'm really excited to be here giving you another update. Basically, this year, we're continuing to promote our healthy eating and trying to balance what, you know, kids like with our, you know, our Tahoe chef-created homemade recipes, and that's always a balancing act. We really want to get kids to eat homemade food, nutritious food, and we also want to give them the opportunity to make choices. So our elementaries, you know, continue, continue to offer three choices every day. We still have our, we have about eight choices a day at the high school and the middle school, so we're hoping that we can influence healthy eating by providing, you know, some fun homemade things, as well as the choices that, you know, that kids expect to see. I think last year, when I spoke to you, I was just getting my Kids in the Kitchen classes off the ground, so I'm really happy to say that I've had a really successful first year at it. And I can just kind of fill you in. So Kids in the Kitchen is, through Tahoe, the, my company, we, being chefs, like to provide nutrition education to kids. And in the past, I might have gone and done something in the middle school and talked about nutritious snacks, or during the school day, you know, go and work in the culinary classes at the high school, and I still continue to do that, and kind of pop in and help out and do different school day events. But what, what excited me when I heard about Kids in the Kitchen and other school districts that Tahoe has, is that food service director gets to teach kids after school, so there's not this rush of, you know, "We've got other things to do," or "I'm kind of, I'm guest teaching, so I'm kind of, you know, in another instructor's space," and things like that. This is sort of like, "I get to be the instructor, you know, and this is my time, and I really want to share my love of food with kids." And I can tell you, last year, so I started at Keganza, and I kind of started doing them at Sand Hill, and then finally, this year, I've got my first one at Fox this Thursday. So some of the things I've done are Tex-Mex cooking, we did homemade pasta, we've done, did Norwegian baking, we did homemade soup and bread, just to name a few. But basically, they're free classes, so I kind of do them at the end of the school day, so the kids come down, and we spend about an hour to an hour and a half together. And we put out a permission slip ahead of time, and we explain it to parents, and it's free. We make sure that, you know, we've got everybody checked in, and that at the end of the class, we make sure they're, you know, going safely with whoever's supposed to pick them up or walk home or whatever. But there's been a lot of interest in it, and I've really, really enjoyed it. So what I decided to bring you guys for a snack is this apple galette, which I've actually taught third, fourth graders how to make that. So believe it or not, they make a homemade crust, peel and slice apples, follow a recipe to make the filling, teach them how to put that all together, and they all get to take something home. So it's another thing with Kids in the Kitchen that I think is exciting, is that we're not only sharing this love of food with kids and getting kids to explore without it being the pressure of being in, like, the school day. Like, you're not being tested, doesn't have to be perfect, it's sort of like a relaxed way to explore food, a positive interaction with food. But then, by letting them take something home that they've created with their own hands, they get to share that with their families. So I'm really hoping that I can kind of get my message across about what we do as Tahoe Food Service, that we're really promoting this idea that we should be making things from scratch and eating while, thinking, mindful eating, but I'm sort of subliminally saying, "Hey, parents, you know, we're, this is something that we're doing, that we think is important," and kind of get that conversation started about nutritious eating, about cooking from scratch, because sometimes the kids will tell me when I see them the next time, "Well, I, you know, I got my mom to make this," or "We, you know, we looked at that recipe," and it sort of starts this whole conversation in the family about the food. And I think that is, that's my whole purpose, is just to get that full, everybody involved. So, let's see, Chef Pete, I want to mention, we have Chef Pete, of course, we love him. He works at the high school doing special meals, and he does sampling for me in the other buildings, and he has a really good rapport with the kids, so it's fun to see him interacting. He's been here for quite a while, too, so year to year, the kids are kind of grown up knowing Chef Pete, and I just think it's fantastic that we continue to have Chef Pete to work with. Really quickly, I know, I don't have a lot of time, but catering, obviously, every year I'm always pushing our catering program, and you know that I'm available for anything small and last minute to large events. We are actually, Becky Egan and I are planning some really nice food for Teacher Appreciation Breakfast in January that we're gonna do on a day off, and I'm really excited about that. And then last but not least, every May, our Sit and Am I Week, which continues to be amazing and very popular. So just really quickly, I'm gonna scroll through some, some fun pictures. Just an example of some fun catering that I've done. And here's Chef Pete with one of his creations, which I happen to really think was great. It's a Saint Angelo spaghetti pie that he made just a few weeks ago, actually. Let's see, so here's, this is an example of my setup for Kids in the Kitchen. So you can see there's, I think there's about 16, 16 chef hats there. So when the kids come in, I am completely ready for them to show up. I mean, I've got everything ready to go, and, you know, we have our whole agenda, because we only have an hour. And kids don't have the same attention span, you know, that adults do, so I really try to make it fast and fun, and I really, I really feel good about what we're doing there. Some examples of kids rolling out their crust, and it's, it's just wonderful. We get, we get a pretty good mix of boys and girls, I would say. There's me showing them how to, how to get that crust formed. Okay, so I had to include some of these. So last spring, DeeDee in the Drama Department at the high school asked me to provide food for the dinner theater that she was putting on with, with the Drama Kids. So it's called the All-School Talent Show, and so she and I collaborated for, you know, me to do this classic lunch lady-style food event with these kids that were actually performing in the play. So all of these students here were actually actors in this dinner theater play, and then before the performance, everyone that was, you know, part of the dinner theater came in and got their food. So we did sloppy joes, we did cheesy potatoes, we did really class, classic lunch food fair that, you know, we really tried to have fun, and I was really lucky that I got to wear the blue smock. I was really, really into it, really in character, but it was really fun. I had a blast, and that's just another example of a way that I feel like, I want you guys to know that me, as a food service director, you know, I am really happy to collaborate, even if it's the weekends or evenings, for special events like this, because any, any part that I can play with food in the district is, it's a really wonderful way for me to express myself as well. Can I have a blank slide? Okay, this is an example of our Sit and Am I, so I have a few slides for Sit and Am I. This is a student with her homemade meatballs and lobster, and every year, we have our district, our regional chef, Chef Josh, come, and he spends the entire week cooking for the Stoughton School District, and we are really proud of this meal. Everything is homemade, and we do classes surrounding this, so not only are we making this Norwegian meal to coincide with a Sit and Am I celebration in town, we're also trying to, you know, promote some cooking skills. So here's an example, this is a smore bratton that a student made. And what I had done is, in the past, I've done lobster classes, I've done crum caca, I've done all sorts of things, but this year, we did a smore bratton. So we actually had all the ingredients to make this an open-faced sandwich, and it's supposed to be artistically put together, so I really liked this example to share with you. Just a really fun picture, just to point out, of course, I couldn't be here without my awesome staff. I have really wonderful staff that come back year after year, that are very dedicated, they love the kids, they love what they do, they love food, and this happened to be, last May, we had Lunch Lady Superhero Day, and so I told all of my staff to just dress up and be the superhero that you are, so they really had fun with that. Sorry, I didn't mean to have any blank slides, and that's it. If you guys have any questions for me, I really appreciate being here, and I really... If you guys have any questions for me, I really appreciate being here and I really love working with all of you.
Questions from anyone? Comments? Donna?
I just wanted to go, because I've had lots of conversations with you, Michelle, and I mean, your ideas are great. And Michelle was pretty involved with the wellness committee, the subcommittee, and has lots of great ideas for how we can implement some of those things. So it's more just to tell you how great you are.
Thank you. That's really nice. I think you're great, too. So I have a question.
Go ahead, Steve.
Yeah, thank you for the presentation. I guess there's a lot of discussion in school districts across the country about mixing curriculum, you know, like outdoor, especially, you know, this district is starting to do more outdoor activity and, you know, maybe gardening, you know, kind of that food, I don't know what it's called, farm-to-table movement. But, you know, school farm-to-table movement. Any thoughts around that?
So we, it's something that I am really trying to get different things going. I know that we've got school gardens going and we're trying to collaborate, at least at Foxbury, with, you know, trying to see how that all plays out as far as getting produce into the lunch program, composting. You know, I've got some farmers in the area that I, you know, we're trying to line up schedules and bringing them in to, you know, work with the kids during the school day. But honestly, with the amount of space that we have somewhere like Sand Hill in the back, I mean, I think it would be an amazing thing to have a garden there. So it's just something that, you know, it's another way to express, you know, our love for food and definitely something to keep working at.
You?
I have a question and a comment. You mentioned karate and when you do that, it's within the district, right?
Catering is only in the district.
Yeah, but it's like the school?
It's all through, it's all school catering. So I don't do anything for anybody else, just you guys. I'm just here for you, basically. Yeah.
Well, the comment I had is that my son, my younger son went to one of their classes. I think it was the first one, you dated Keganza. He enjoyed it really, really.
This, the apple, was that the one that he did?
Don't remember, it was last year.
Oh, last year.
It was the first one that you had of Keganza.
Oh, okay. That might have been soup and bread.
Don't remember, but he had a blast.
I'm glad.
Thank you.
Other comments or questions? Well, thank you, Michelle. It's always good to hear your presentation. And I'm really glad that you're expanding the Kids in the Kitchen program, because I think that's a fantastic idea. I have a sophomore in college who was complaining over the weekend that he doesn't know how to cook anything. And I said, well, when you come home, we're going to spend some time together in Dad's kitchen.
And I think that idea, going back to the gardening, I think if there's a way, you know, if we can expand, I would, you know, I try to do things that I feel really comfortable with. I'm not a great gardener, but I really, I try. I try to garden every year. But I think if we could have, if I could collaborate with someone in each of the schools to kind of do an outdoor Kids in the Kitchen towards the spring, where we kind of collaborate with some spring produce or spring, you know, planting and then kind of talk through the types of recipes. So I can do the gardening through that angle. But I think if we had a green thumb that I could pair with, I think, I mean, we could really do that and it would be an amazing experience because, you know, the outdoor is a great learning environment, of course. So I'd like to be able to do that. But yeah, kids need to learn how to cook for sure from this age, you know, you have to eat. So it's a good skill to have. And people are impressed when you can cook, so.
And it's a survival skill.
Yes, we call it a survival skill, but just your basic, you just kind of feed yourself, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Okay, the next discussion item we have is a report from the Teacher Compensation Committee. I didn't see you back there. I was afraid you might not have shown up.
Well, thanks for the opportunity to come and give you an update on the work that the Compensation Committee has been doing over the past several months since the continued directive to move forward with exploring a system that'll work for the district. The committee continues to work very diligently, has studied a lot of different plans, kind of taken the revised direction and input, and has spent lots of hours looking at different models and talking through what the best options are for this district. So what I'm going to share with you is the current thinking, where the committee is, and hopefully get your feedback on that. We have just today shared this also with educators, so we're moving down that road. So in spite of the fact that we have gone through three iterations of this committee, the committee objective remains the same, to create a sustainable, well-defined pay structure that retains and attracts quality staff. So that is continuing to be the goal of the committee. So the plan that I'm going to talk to you about is designed to promote a collaborative and progressive learning environment that ensures all students are adequately prepared for their future. We're going to talk about all the pieces of the puzzle, but really in the end, it's about student achievement and ensuring that that comes through in the teaching. And the compensation piece that we are looking at now, the model, has two components, so contract pay and teacher leadership. And I'm going to talk a little bit about each of those. The framework, the first component, the contract pay, is showing that the district values knowledge, skills, professionalism, and influence on student learning both in and out of the classroom. The district also values educators' commitment to the Stoughton Area School District, and you'll see that reflected in the components we talk about. So contract pay, in some cases, they talk about annual pay. What we're talking about here is the base and supplemental pay. And the caveat always is, of course, that the system can only be as good as the funds available for it. So the district will prioritize compensating professional educators for their services with the acknowledgement that we're always working with what funds are available. So that's kind of the underlying understanding. On the contract pay piece of it, we're looking at recommending an annual increase, subject to funds that are available. And the intent of the committee is for all eligible educators to receive an equal increase, and that would be comprised of both base and supplemental. The base pay is determined annually by, through the negotiation process. And then the supplemental pay is the increase that the board identifies through the budgeting process. The thought is that the annual increase would go to all eligible educators. And eligibility would be defined as professional responsibilities of the classroom building and district are being met, and that there's active, regular collaboration with colleagues that influenced student achievement. And then, of course, just the acknowledgement that this educator couldn't be on an improvement plan and get that annual increase. In terms of validating or verifying that eligibility criteria, we continue to talk about the fact that that responsibility would be on each of the educators supervising administrator. So they would be responsible for annually verifying that the educators are meeting that criteria. And if or when they aren't, they would have the onus on them to work with the educator to report that there is a discrepancy and, when necessary, to work with them if that criteria isn't being met. So it wouldn't, no surprises is essentially what that is doing. With the annual increase, there are two identified ways to add to that. One is through National Board Certification, and that is, as it's outlined in the employee handbook, the $1,500 increase, a stipend for achieving the National Board Certification. And the second component would be for a master's degree. This would be for those educators who haven't yet received payment for a master's degree. So this is kind of in-between compensation systems, essentially. We have a kind of a date to be determined. When you could submit to Human Resources verification of an earned degree to receive an annual payment of an amount that is approved as we go through the modeling and that amount of that. We put the timeline in there with a kind of a sunset date, if you would, because of the issuing of life licenses that the state has done. So no salary increases would be awarded for any newly awarded master's degrees would fall outside of that. So this phase out would allow those who have started the degree to be able to complete So in addition to the annual increase, we are examining a retention incentive. So in an effort to retain staff, this incentive would be in place on top of the annual salary after the completion of a successful fifth year and the eleventh year that the educators in the district. So those would be consecutive years, commitment to the district. And then the second component, so the first one is contract pay, the second one is teacher leadership. The teacher leadership is intended for the district to recognize that it values educators' influence on the growth of students as well as the departments, schools, and district. So this is kind of a broader impact. And this is still kind of in the exploration phase through the committee. There's obviously a lot to talk about and would be a lot of definition to go on here. But they're looking at teacher leadership roles that advance the district goals and meet building needs to provide additional opportunities for educators in a variety of areas. This would give the district some flexibility, so you can focus on areas, define some very specific roles with kind of beginning and end dates and very specific objectives. So right now, the committee is looking at how to structure that, define and align those roles. And they're just considering how these roles might offer additional incentives or additional compensation for educators, and specifically through stipends for specific term, limited term roles. So those, we've kind of condensed it. Obviously, there was a lot of work that went into that. There are still pieces that need to be done, just developing that teacher leadership component of it, working on some financial models to ensure that is sustainable, and taking a look with real numbers at how that plays out. Certainly defining the transition plan, so how do we move from the system that we are in into the new system. We're talking about that, what it looks like. The communications, as I said, this kind of core piece was shared today with educators. When we come back after break, we'll be talking about collecting input back and having some conversations. And then being prepared to submit to you a revised proposal by May of 2018 as.
So questions from anybody?
Thank you. I know you guys have been working so hard to get this ready. Can you explain again about the master degree? If you can go back.
Sure. So there was an acknowledgement that there are some people who were starting to work on a master's degree at a time when there wasn't necessarily incentive being given for it under a kind of a previous plan. So essentially, there are people who have already earned a master's degree and their current salary represents that fact. So someone coming to the district, for example, with a master's degree, would come into the district at a level that included it. And then under previous plans, there would be increases. The current plan, that isn't the case. And the idea is that because the state has changed its approach with the licensing, that that isn't necessarily an incentive for licensing anymore either. But we want to acknowledge those folks who have already begun the process and perhaps are in the middle of it. And so we identify a sunset date during which time people who have an approved master's degree that they are pursuing would be able to get an increase for that.
And what would happen, I mean, so maybe, I don't know if I'm understanding, but it means that once this plan is implemented, the master's degree won't be counted or like it won't be necessary to have or?
Because of the change in the state licensing, the thought is that people wouldn't necessarily be pursuing the master's degree for that, you know, for that purpose.
For the license, yeah.
Right. So it's not that they wouldn't value the education that they'd be getting through that degree, but it was kind of just in keeping with the state licensing.
But we wouldn't give any incentive either if a person, then after that. But wouldn't that be like, I don't know, it's my own opinion probably, but if I'm not going to get any incentive for a master's degree, I wouldn't go do it because it costs money and all that.
Right. Well, I mean, certainly the value, valuing educators' education is core to this plan. And one of the things that we're looking at is how can we do professional development in the district? So those teacher leadership roles, for example, are looking at ways that you can have educators learning from each other and, you know, growing in that way, not necessarily having to spend the money to get the master's degree unless that's a personal goal. So in terms of benefiting the district, we're looking forward to be a kind of internal.
And that is okay. I see that, I mean, having to learn from each other, but that causes also, when you don't go out, you have nothing new to bring to the district either. So it's kind of like an inbreeding system, if you just keep doing that. I don't know if you understand what I mean.
Certainly. I mean, that is not to say that other kinds of professional growth won't be happening. I don't want to speak for the majority of people, I defer to others on the committee here. Or, no, I mean, I think it's fine. It wouldn't be that, it would be exclusive, but it wasn't, it's not just the master's degree just because of that.
So there will be other incentive to for going and educating yourself as a professional outside the district that will then bring those knowledge to the district.
I mean, we hadn't talked about other kinds of academic attainment.
Come on, thank you.
Other questions? Steve, you had a hand up before, I thought. Okay.
Have you talked a little, anything about where there's the accountability aspect to this plan? Because that's, I think, what a lot of community members would ask us. And I don't know if we've started having conversations about it or have answered it already in the committee.
Yeah, no, certainly we are looking at the accountability piece of it. So on the contract side, that's kind of evaluation, your educator or your administrator is working with you. The opportunities, I think, for the, in the teacher leadership and the definition of the roles and the accountability through that process is where I'm thinking majority of that is going to come and majority of the opportunity is going to come through sort of that side of the framework.
The question that I have about that is then if the contract pay is equal for everybody, and we heard many people complaining about that if you wanted to get hired, hey, you had to do extra work. And what do you do, how are you compensated if you're just a really good teacher in the classroom and that's all you wanted to do? I don't see that now being incorporated into what you have shown us here. Has that been discussed at all at the committee level?
Yes, definitely. So again, the idea with the annual increase is that there is the even playing field. So that's not the, you know, you are, through that process, because of your professional contribution to the district, you are being rewarded, incentivized, compensated for that. For additional growth and looking at things outside, and they aren't necessarily, I mean, we're looking at both district-wide leadership roles as well as building specific leadership roles. And those are the additional opportunities to jump in. And that may or may not be more time. I mean, many of the roles that we've talked about wouldn't necessarily require more time. It would be more about sharing the learning with your colleagues and opportunities to grow in that way. So I think we're trying to accomplish both. I mean, what we know is you can't solve all the problems and address all of the issues through a compensation system. And we think that with this, these kind of two components of the system we're looking at now, you are acknowledging the work that people do and you are providing additional opportunities for sharing that knowledge, growing that knowledge.
Other questions?
I'm not sure. I'm not sure I understood that last question and answer, so I think I'll, I want to ask what might be the same question in a different way. Suppose you have two teachers with equal experience and who do equal levels of work outside the classroom. One is an adequate teacher, one is an excellent. One is an adequate teacher, one is an excellent teacher. Are those two teachers compensated the same?
They would receive increases that were the same. So depending on where they started, that first of all, would probably not necessarily mean an even playing field. I mean, in terms of whether they are exactly the same. So the increases we're looking at now are the same. But the opportunities for taking on the other roles, other leadership roles, and I think leadership, we're we're kind of playing with that language a little bit because it really is roles that the district needs to reach goals that it that are being set. So in your example, and it's it's where the the focus of those educators are, there are opportunities, we are hoping, the the goal is that everyone would see at some point a role that would fit their professionalism, their focus area, their expertise. And so those might change over time. They will change over time because the district's needs will change. So I think everybody will have opportunities along the way. I don't know that they'll all be exactly the same.
Right. And what I'm trying to focus on is my two hypothetical teachers who start at the same place and who do the same thing. They teach in the classroom. They don't do any of the outside the classroom activities. One is very good, one is just good enough to escape being put on a performance improvement plan. Their raises aren't the same.
In this case, they would be the same.
Okay, yeah. Thanks.
Other questions?
Just, I just want to add to the accountability comment. I think that's that is important, and I'm assuming you're also discussing along those lines, the concept of reciprocal accountability. So accountability, not just from teachers on up, but what is the accountability expectations of supervisors who are ultimately going to be making decisions that could impact?
Yeah, as we talk about, as we talk about the structure, that's that's one of the pieces of the puzzle, certainly.
Because I think when we hear accountability, we think we have to hold teachers accountable. I agree with that, but there's also got to be an accountability from the top down.
Right.
To ensure that the teachers are getting the support and the resources they need to do. Thank you.
Right.
I see the other question again. Steve, go ahead. So I, I know the district has historically done base and supplemental. Would the leadership be considered a type of supplemental?
No.
And the reason I ask is I really don't like the whole idea of having base and supplemental, but I understand that there's some limitations of what the, of what the teachers can negotiate and what they can't. I get that. But the fact is that although although supplemental has been treated like it's salary, it's not. And I think, I've just wondered if you guys have evaluated that.
We have discussed it, but it's not something that we can change or influence, I don't think. So really, we have talked about, and Erica obviously is on the committee, so has helped us, you know, work through this, is how does that, what does that piece look like? And she's has spoken historically about the supplemental increases that have been given.
I was just going to add, when we have talked about this in committee, is that we would treat it very similarly to additives. So people are assigned, they get an appointment, and they get a, an additional amount, but it does not show up on the contract. But it is additional pay as long as they hold that position.
But you were talking about supplemental pay in the contract component, right?
Yes. But also, as as a leader, so you're saying the leadership would be additive?
It would be, it would be similar to an additive. It's not an additive, but that it would be paid similarly.
I guess my my concern around all of that is what are other benefits such as WRS based on?
It's based on all earnings.
All earnings, including supplemental and, okay, thank you. Thank you. Other questions?
Yeah, I guess I would just echo the concerns that both Frank and Donna raised. I, you know, we've had this discussion many times over the last, what is it, three, four years now that this has all been going on, trying to develop a plan that is both predictable and objective, but also rewards excellence. And excellence isn't necessarily a leadership position. If you've got two teachers who, you know, are doing the same work, but one does it better than the other one, to put it even more succinctly than Frank did, it doesn't seem right that they should get the same pay increase. And that is a complaint that I know many of us, maybe all of us, have heard from some staff members, from community members. Certainly, it isn't the way most other professions work. And I have real concerns that that rewarding excellence part doesn't seem to be very well addressed in this plan. And I I fully recognize it's a difficult balance to strike, and I know, I know that you are struggling with that. But I really hope that more will be done to figure out how we're going to reward doing the job you have well as opposed to taking on even more work in order to earn more money. Because, and that's a segue, I guess, to the next concern that I have, and we, you know, you rolled this out for us a few, few days ago, and I've had some time to think about it. The idea that this above and beyond compensation for taking on what you're now calling a teacher leadership role is limited. In other words, it is salary. You get it. It counts towards your retirement and all of that, but it's not a permanent increase in salary the way our current compensation schedule works. I have concerns about that because you're going to, I would imagine, have some people who are going to say, well, I'm not going to try to do that knowing that it's only for the next two years or five years or whatever that I can actually earn that money, and then it's going to disappear on me. So those are some concerns that I have. The other thing that that you said that I wanted you to expand on a little bit is you said that you've now shared this with educators. What exactly are, do you mean by that?
Just they saw the same information that you have because?
This PowerPoint?
Yes. It's in a Word document, but it's the same information.
So how is it sent out?
Through an email today.
Okay, okay. Because I think it's very, very important that this committee get input from ideally all 250 teachers. But I think it needs to be, you need to reach out to get the input as opposed to saying, here's a survey you can take and we'll use those results, or here's a focus group you can attend and we'll use those results. I, I think you have to figure out ways of getting feedback from people that attract a broader audience than those who just feel that they really need to weigh in one way or another. Because, you know, those focus groups only had a couple of dozen people that participated in them, and that's what kicked off this whole thing. And that's always been a concern that I've had is that it was a very narrow group of people whose opinions were voiced, and that's not your fault. But I'd really like to see very, very broad feedback from all of our educators on this before you come back to the board with anything.
If I could just, if I could just kind of respond to a couple of those.
Sure, please.
On the rewarding excellence, clearly that has been part of the conversation, and one of the things that we heard is about the the level of subjectivity and what tool we can use. And we're very open. I mean, this committee has been working super hard and looked at what a lot of different districts are doing, both in this state and outside. And identifying that criteria for excellence that doesn't have an element of subjectivity to it is, I'm not going to say impossible because perhaps there's something, but we haven't found anything yet. So so we're open. And in terms of the feedback, we definitely want to get that feedback. I think in the first go around, we had probably the best, as I understand it, one of the best responses to the overall survey, and then those focus groups did, did mimic what we heard in the survey. So we're looking for, we're looking for ways to gather that feedback and a directive from the board perhaps to participate in the the collection would be maybe helpful.
Other questions or comments? Frank?
I just want to say one thing about the issue of excellence, and please don't take this as a criticism because it's not meant to be at all. I think there are many professions that struggle with that issue. How do you tell a good lawyer from an okay lawyer from a bad lawyer? How do you care, tell a good doctor from a bad doctor from an okay doctor or an accountant? Or any of the professions that involve the use of skill and judgment? You know, where you're, where it's something more than how many widgets did you produce or how many of X did you do in Y time? And I recognize that this is a significant problem in evaluating educators. And I also am sensitive to the concern that any evaluation is going to be subjective in some way. Nevertheless, I really want to urge the committee to think about this and find, find, find the best way we can to address this problem. I would prefer to pay good teachers more than than okay teachers. I would prefer to retain good teachers instead of bad teachers. I think we all would. And I think a part of that dynamic, and I'm talking purely about the issue of classroom skill, we've all have the, you know, jobs where you can check a box, you know, I'm on this committee and I, you know, did this public service and I did this thing, the other thing. But where we make, you know, where our district adds values, educating students, I would like to find a way that we can identify and retain the best people. And I define those as the people who are best at educating kids in the classroom. And I know this is hard, but it's really important. I'll get off to some box for a second.
Tim?
I would concur. I guess, though, having been in education for 23 years, where I still struggle with this issue. And and I've seen it all in the sense, we want to reward excellence, how do you do it without it becoming a zero, a zero-sum game? And what I mean by that is, is we we operate in a world where we have a very finite budget. And ideally, we want every teacher to be excellent. We can't afford every teacher to be excellent. So every, some teachers would have to be less than excellent. And that's, that, I struggle with that. So I don't know how you pay for this type of system. I think on paper, it looks great. We want to reward excellence. It's a great soundbite. I just struggle with how that's going to work when we're dealing with budget restraints that we have and it not being a situation where in order for us to to stay within our budget, we're going to have to have teachers that are that are less than excellent, when our goal should always be striving for all of our teachers to be excellent and figure out a way to get them up to that. Maybe rewarding the better ones is the way to do it. Maybe that'll motivate those that that are, for lack of a better word, as good, but I don't know what it is. So I would, I would hope you consider that too and and come to us and say, if we really want to reward excellence, what at, what are we as a community going to need to do? It seems like we're going to have to pump much more money into the system if we really want to raise the bar. Because I don't just want 20 of our teachers to be excellent. That's not good enough for me. I would want most, the majority of them to be. And that's going to cost us money. And I don't know that it's money that we have. So I think we have to be very careful though when we have this discussion, and this is just my opinion, on what we really mean by that and what what it's going to cost from a long-term financial sustainability standpoint. Because I just, the zero-sum game thing, which is, it just doesn't feel like, I just don't know how it would work without it leading to something like that.
Frank?
I want to push back on the characterization of that as a soundbite. I think that if we had the problem where we had too many excellent teachers, not enough money to pay them, that would be a great problem to have.
I would concur.
And with no offense to anyone in this district, I don't think that's where we are. I think that it is not only an issue of fundamental fairness, but an issue of retention to reward the excellent more than the good. And that if we get to the point where all of our teachers are excellent, not in a Lake Wobegon, you know, we're all slightly above average, but where we are truly excellent, then that's a bridge that we can cross when we get there. But right now, what I would like to see, and I think is tremendously important, is a distinction between the most excellent, most excellent, between excellent classroom teachers and teachers who are not there and a compensation plan that rewards the excellent more.
Joe?
John?
I'm sorry. So I agree with Frank with everything that you said, but what worries me is that this is what happened with the last compensation model. We decided we were going to reward what somebody said was excellence, and not everybody agreed with who ended up being excellent and not excellent. And a huge part of the problem that that created, as I recall, is that there was a lot of resentment and there were a lot of relationships that went south because of those things, and people stopped collaborating with each other. And I worry that if we go down this path, and I agree, I'd love to to reward people for being excellent, but if, no one's going to agree with who's excellent. I can tell you what teachers my kids have that I think are excellent. Is that a way to measure it? I, I really struggle with how, how do we measure that? And that's, I guess, my two cents. I sort of like the stability of what you guys are, are coming up with. I can see both sides completely, but I don't want to end up with a plan that takes a different approach to deciding who's excellent and be back here in three years because it's a different set of people that are, feel like they've been slighted by the plan. I would rather go with boring.
Joe?
So I guess Joe's thoughts sort of come into what I was interested in saying, and the compensation model that we have right now seems to put our educators into levels based on their sphere of influence. Are you influencing your classroom? Are you influencing your school? Are you influencing the whole district? And I, I think another big component of what we as a community have decided in that plan needed reworking was that it, it wasn't as focused enough on classroom performance specifically as, as the whole community might have been interested in. So I, I think if we are going to end up assessing educators based on performance in the classroom, I assume that there's not going to be some fully objective rubric that we're all going to be happy with, or I know a lot of, or our feedback has generally been that a lot of educators bristle at, at that concept. And I am absolutely not opposed to finding some sort of more subjective way to reward excellence. But I do think that we have also consistently received feedback from our district administration that assessing all of our educators with the current manpower that we have or with the current administrative structure that we have right now is really difficult. So if, if we are presented with, with a plan that is putting the burden of performance assessment on, on somebody, if it, if we are expecting to, again, place it on our, on our building leadership or our building administrators, I think we are going to, as a district and as a board, have to reckon with the fact that we might have to increase staffing in those areas. Because I think the only way that we could build trust down in the pool of educators that we have being evaluated is for them to feel like the people evaluating them are specialists in that, specialists in education, specialists in the, in the things that they are teaching in their classrooms. And right now, it seems like the, the workload of running a school in addition to the workload of evaluating every single teacher in our district every year is, is too much or is really difficult. So I want to make sure that, you know, if we decide to, to try to reward excellence, I think we need to make sure that we have enough people in there doing it and performing those evaluations. That's not necessarily something that has to be built into the compensation plan. I just would like us as a board, since we're, since we're talking about it now and expecting to receive a plan before we adopt anything, I think we have to prepare for the before we adopt anything, I think we have to prepare for the, prepare for the rollout and implementation because rollout specifically was an issue last time. But I think implementation may also be a current issue in knowing that it's hard for our district to be able to evaluate or assess all of our educators right now.
Steve? So kind of following up on John's points. The administrator would be responsible, the school, the building administrator would be responsible under the current thinking for evaluating each year, correct? I believe there was a slide they mentioned that.
Right, right.
Okay. And Mike Cruz is a building administrator? Has there been feedback from Mike that this is not doable? Or, because I think, personally, I think that's a good place for evaluations to be done, is at the building administrator level. They're day-to-day. They know what's going on. I mean, I don't know if that contradicts with what you're saying?
No.
Okay.
No, I just, I think that if we're going to have people doing those jobs, they need to be able to do their regular role in addition to evaluating. And if we're putting an increased burden on them in evaluating the performance of all of the educators below them, and if that burden is higher than it used to be, then we might have to add staff at the administrative level. Or we just have to be able, we have to make sure that any plan that we're presented with, we're able to implement, so.
Joe?
Before we get too much farther into deciding what it is that we think we want as a board, I would like to find out what kind of feedback you get from teachers and see what their reaction is. I mean, none of us are going to live under this plan. So if it turns out that there's a positive response to what you've got so far, then I think we should be prepared to respect that. And if there's not, obviously, you're going to have to, you know, change things based on whatever feedback is. But I'm not designing this thing, and I'm not going to be compensated on it. So I guess I'd rather hear from the folks that are going to be affected before we take this a lot farther.
Sure. And that's a good point. Do you have a timetable for feedback from staff?
We wanted to get a little further on the teacher leadership piece of it, but because we hadn't yet provided an update for them, that was why we wanted to know where the thinking was. So in January, that's kind of, we're going to start out with exploring how exactly to get the feedback and what it is we're looking for. So that's kind of top priority right after putting a little bit more detail on the teacher leadership.
Why don't we tentatively pencil you in for an update in March or so?
Okay.
Does that sound reasonable to you?
Sure. And you've been getting the minutes, so hopefully you're also being kept up to date along the way.
Right, but I mean, something more like, yes, where we can do Q and A.
The minutes have been very, very helpful.
Yes, thank you.
John?
You mentioned that you sent this information out to all of the teachers today, right?
We did.
Is there any way that you would be able to compile and submit some of that feedback to us in the meantime?
If we get feedback, we wanted people to just, you know, not give it to them on Friday, have enough time to think about it. So if we get feedback, we didn't necessarily, you know, invite it. We didn't want to add something to their lists. But we will more formally request information going into January.
Great, thanks.
So if we hear, if we hear something or there's a big groundswell of information, we'll share it.
Okay.
Anybody else? All right. Thank you very much, Leo.
Thank you.
Board members, we do have reason to convene in executive session in accordance with Wisconsin Statute, Section 19.85 Sub 1 Sub C and Sub F, to consider preliminary findings concerning criticisms of the performance of the district administrator. I would entertain a motion to move into closed session for that specific purpose.
I still move.
Those, Frank?
Frank.
Okay, second?
Second.
From Joe, in a discussion, and then a roll call, please.
Mr. Buban?
Yes.
Mr. Coughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Frey?
Yes.
Ms. Fitzgibbon?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Sork?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Hi.
Ms. Tarpidian?
Yes.
President Dirks?
Yes. So it's just after 8:15. We're going to be meeting next door because there are computers upstairs that are taking up all available space, I'm told. So let's meet at 8:20. I can't see that clock.
8:15, right on.
So 8:20, next door, please. It's good. First day of daycare.
How'd that work out?